Last minute deals and then you have to read what they approved. And it gets down to supplying print. But state health change for certified really hurt us this time. We knew that we had a non-cert change coming. They did increase it, too. It was supposed to be two hundred and fifty per month for about eight months. It wound up being more in the neighborhood of three seventy-five per person per month for eight months. So, but the non-cert is not what got us. It was the certified change that was massive. Just as an example, insurance, state up insurance for one certified person for FY twenty-five is twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars annually each.
Yeah, for one person?
One person.
In addition to whatever they pay.
So, um, let's flip on, I'll show you.
So how much do they pay?
Well, that's been on their plan, you know.
Sure.
You guys have a plan.
And we still contribute eighty dollars to non-certified per month and forty dollars to certified per month. We've been doing that for in excess of fifteen years. So that does, these numbers include all that information, too. All right, instruction, this is similar to what you've seen in the past. This is the salaries and benefits portion of our instruction. On the left, you're going to see the description of what the position is, the object code. And a lot of this sometimes is for my benefit because I get to go back and hear all this line by line. What we budgeted in our most recent amendment for FY twenty-four, what we have proposed for FY twenty-five, and the dollar change in each line item. So you're going to see a large difference here because this is where most of our certified folks are. This is, this section also has employed parapros. We still have twenty-nine employed parapros in the system. The rest of them are contracted through ESS.
How many total do we have?
Uh, we have sixty-five. We have three right from the start, three behavior techs, one sped pre-K. I have cheat sheet with all this on it. Special ed has, I know that we have twenty-nine that are budgeted in salary benefits and forty that are budgeted in ESS. We have sixteen.
And we have eighty-five at this right now school year.
We have eighteen.
Going from eighty-five to sixty.
I agree, that's, that's.
Is that good? Yeah, I was going to say it's broken into lots of little categories, but, but all total, there is, all total it is sixty-five. We have six media, fifteen kindergarten, that's one for each kindergarten class, two in fund, one fifty, that they can sacrifice some of their federal and general fund if they would like to have a floater parent. So two schools do that. We have two ISS, we have three behavior techs, three right from the start, one ESOL, and then what we call regular ed, and that's it. The ones we brought in from R, you know, three schools got two pares and they can use them. Most are using them in first and second grade, and then JMS has one also. But that is sixty-nine, actually not sixty-five, sixty-nine. Right from the start is paid out of those state funds. Uh, special ed has twenty-seven. They cover eleven of those, I cover the rest of them out of general fund, just so y'all know. So it is, it is split among quite a few categories. So what you see here is most of them, but you will not see them all. You'll see them scattered in a couple of different places.
Is right from the start what used to be called babies can't wait?
Yes, that's. It is that pre-K program that is the four-year-old program that is right before kindergarten, that's out at Hill City.
Oh, okay, because babies can't wait went from zero to three.
Right, this is, this is the pre-K. Um, what, this is the one that, there are four groups split across the county. You can only earn classrooms in attendance areas, basically. So Tate has Head Start and they have right from, they have a right from the start program. Harmony Academy has a right from the start program. Country Kids has a right from the start program. So the only place we can show a need is in Hill City where there is no program, so we have three classrooms. Then we also have special ed that we do off grants here, so. So you'll see we have about a two-point-six million dollar increase just in salary and benefits. That's going to be the largest single item that you're going to see at one time in here, I believe. I think you'll go to the next slide. This is also instruction, the operating side. Want to explain, you're going to see the school names to the left. This is not their instructional money for anybody except the high school and vocational. What this is, it is our substitutes and our contracted parapros. So this is where forty of the parapros are.
Okay.
But as you come down to the high school, this is where their instructional funds are. They are not a Title I school. Therefore, I cannot incorporate them in the fund one fifty, so their instructional funds must stay here. And now it also has their textbooks, which were a little over ninety-nine thousand dollars, their subs and their contracted pairs all get lumped into that one line. So that increase in what we pay pares for thirteen fifty to fifteen dollars an hour really starts to show in this area. Um, you know, that's a large increase, but this is where most of that money goes. Every time a parapro resigns, quits, we replace it with a contracted pair. So that's why you see this category going up and the salary benefit part going down with the pares. Special ed, they get their earnings for instructional funds there, too. And again, they have subs, contract, contracted pares. There's a portion of the state preschool grant, just about twenty thousand dollars, and that's for supplies. Our, all ed program is in here, that includes North Star who is returning next year. We had thought we would be having to handle all that ourselves. The legislature allowed them to continue one more year. We are still scrambling to get a little information because that decision was made very late in the game, but I think we have enough budgeted here. We also cover the ISS pares out of here and our PACE program. So the software for PACE, the program that we use for them, is in this category. So it does make that amount a little bit higher than what we earn. But we do not have the final number from North Star, so I had to kind of do an educated guess based on the last three years' participation.
When did we find out about North Star?
That they were returning? I did not find out until less than three weeks ago.
Yeah, that was into the general system. That was another thing, the assembly ends in the March and they push it out to the governor and the governor can sign or not things, and then we get told it. He's like the first of May is the earliest you could tell.
And so we have requested the information from North Star as to what the charges will be, but they are still, they were thinking they were gone. So they're having to very quickly get their information together. It should be very similar to what happened this year, though.
So Amy, just to clarify, so like if I look at Hill City, the big, the increase, one hundred and seventy-eight with the pair, is that, that's mainly we're absorbing parapro pay?
We are, it's the dollar fifty increase plus any pares from last year, from twenty, and I don't know what name working anymore, but from twenty-four to twenty-five. Any pares that have resigned that worked at that school and are replaced by contracted, we're bringing from the salary part down into contracted.
Okay, so that could only be four people?
Yeah.
If this went from zero to forty-something thousand dollars somewhere to salary benefits?
Yeah, okay, got you.
So here is. Um, let's see. The pares at Hill, uh, regular pares are about a hundred and eighty-six thousand. So it's about thirty-one thousand per. Um, it's actually thirty thousand five hundred per, but that's what that makes up. So those numbers, as they do resign and we replace them, those numbers are coming down into that. We did bring some from, uh, two each from.
R.
And the behavior tech from R into this, so that's three positions.
We've seen some of that.
Some of that was in federal funds last year and not in here. And if they're our employee, they're in the last slide Amy showed. That's what you meant, if they're ESS, they're in this slide. So if an our employee quit, we replaced them with ESS, would have taken money away from the last slide added to this one, does that make sense?
Yeah.
The behavior techs were employed, so they all went into the salary portion.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, there's a, there's a little bit of a layer up there. Um, other programs, um, we, in R, we had funded something called a learning management program. This is what you may hear from schools called Candace. Um, they've been very happy with that. We had a different LMS program prior to that. Uh, we have successfully been able to take that out of a grant for about three years. Um, now, we do not have a grant, but it is the platform that the teachers use for information to pass back and forth with the students and the parents and, and staff. So it runs about a hundred thousand dollars. So we're bringing that from R into this, and I wanted to separate it from the schools so that, you know, that is more of a county level expense, even though it's an instructional tool and I do have to put it in instruction. I didn't want to push that into the schools and, and y'all, it breaks it apart and you can't see it, so I wanted y'all to know what that was. And, and that is the biggest change in that category. The other programs are things like, um, we have a small ESOL grant that will come through, state grant that will come through. We have some small state grants that come through and they typically, if they're instructional, have to go here, but they've been less than forty thousand dollars typically. But, um, I, I collect all of those, but the biggest thing is that LMS program. So overall, that category is up three-point-two-eight-five million.
Amy, I ask a question about the special ed decrease on that slide.
Okay.
So is that just to the smaller number of students with IEPs that we have in the district compared to last year? What was the, what's the treatment of that?
There is, it's actually several things. One is we are not bringing back as many pares because we've had a reduction in FTE or students that are in the program. So between the two, it also, their operating funds that they earn through FTE, we give them the full amount and their funds had dropped.
Got you, okay.
On midterm, so.
Amy, that, that three-point-two million is the last slide plus this.
Yes, it is.
Make sure we have that.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's a running total.
That was just a bigger section, so. And y'all have questions on instruction? This is, like I said, by far our largest category and where most of our staff is. Okay, we're going to go to people services. People services, um, is where, um, your, uh, social workers, your therapist, uh, techno, no, I'm sorry, not technology. Your therapist, your nurses, your data clerks, they're all housed here in salary and benefits. You're going to note to the far right, um, we did eliminate one clerical position. We had someone retire, reevaluated, uh, it's a, it was a central office-based position, reevaluated and did not replace that. We were able to give the jobs out among other people. And then our, you know, um, athletic and academic supplements, I believe this is something Mr. Parker and Dr. Thomas introduced y'all several months ago. There were a few tweaks to it, um, there were, there was a little difference in the total. When you add days to something, you have to actually get a salary and calculate how much that gives, and I don't know that that was included last time, but I did.
We just picked a wild number, we had to pick an average number.
Right.
And Amy went in and actually did it with every actual person, which made the number a little bit different.
If the position was vacant, I did use, I did use an average number in there, but I wanted y'all to have this accurate, accurate count of what is in that category as possible. Let's see, nurses, um, changes there were from the non-certified salary schedule. When it comes to psychologists, social workers, the certified staff members, it is a step increase, it is the twenty-five hundred, you know, that the governor has passed down, plus our local, where we went from eleven to twelve percent. Now, one item is on here that has, I don't believe it's been discussed with y'all too much, is something called a graduation coach. I will let Dr. Thomas do that, and then a portion of a family engagement coordinator is going to be a half, a half-time person. It's a retiree who's going to join us, and the other portion will come out of a Title I grant, and we'll see it later in the presentation.
Well, we used to have a graduation coach.
Yes.
Years ago, so this will be good to.
One, one change that has been noted is that we are losing students, um, since seventeen eighteen, we have lost over four hundred students. So COVID was part of that, and then they kind of, about half of those came back, and then we've noticed that we were losing students again. So, and it is to basically homeschool. Um, so I believe some of this position, some of the views would be to help us, number one, deter students from leaving us, finding out what's going on that's making them leave, and two, possibly reach out to the community and see if we can get some of those students back. You know, we're under four thousand FTEs now, where we were over forty-four hundred, and I believe it was seventeen eighteen there. So it, it has become a large number, it has happened over time, but we are, that homeschool population, because of COVID, and there are so many online resources where they're not coming in. Um, I'm sure it's sometimes easier on parents to not have to worry about how to get a child to school, but it's something that I think Dr. Thomas felt strongly about, um, trying to find out what's going on there and see if we can pull some of those students back into public school, because we do think we have quite a few things to offer them. Um, and sometimes it is the best setting. If you don't know how to teach and don't know how to use the resources, those students might not get the education that, you know, they deserve.
So Dr. Thomas, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
Dr. Thomas, before you talk about the graduation coach, I'd like to just reiterate something that Ms. Smith said just for the, the public that's watching this. Um, there have been times over the years where we've been accused of just padding the roles here at the central office and just hiring more people, and it's not a wise thing to do. You made the statement, but I would like to make sure everybody heard it, that while this is a small amount of money, relatively speaking, you had someone here in the central office that is gone, and you chose not to replace them.
We can have them.
Their duties were spread out, I'd just like the public to, to be aware of that.
And at different times over the years, we have had grants that actually would pay for what was essentially a graduation coach. We did for multiple years have that, um, and found it very valuable, and then I think it went down to a half-time person, goes full-time and half to half-time, they had several duties. But, but that has gone away, and then these numbers that were, brought to Dr. Thomas's attention, I mean, it, they're going up. Where at one point I think we were getting some of the COVID students back and, and it's going down, but it's begun to trend back up. So it, it is an area of concern that we would like to be able to.
Ms. Emily, thank you for saying that, too, because what we have been, we're very careful about, about this, but one of the things with graduation coach, I had is that, that Matt, um, and I had several conversations about this. This is, this is a budget neutral decision, and what I mean by that is, is actually a teaching slot that Matt did not feel like he needed at the high school. And he wanted to convert that teaching slot into a graduation coach's end. Yeah, so this is not an additional slot per se, it's one that when Matt looked at his numbers, he felt like he could, this would be better serving our kids as opposed to an additional teacher.
Right, so instruction, the last category, would conceivably have one less person when we finish the process, and you would see it in pupil services because they crossed over, but it's not another human being. It'd be the same number of humans, just one less in instruction, one more in pupil services, that's why you see. That's probably recommendation to do that.
Overall, you're going to see an increase of about four hundred and eighty-one thousand salary benefits for this area. Um, in the bottom where you see the schools, uh, they're very small budgets. This is the budget for their counselors at their location. Um, we do a per FTE allotment to each school. Um, the high school does get just a little bit more because they have to deal with graduation, and, uh, there are some costs associated there. Our nursing program, um, not nursing for students, our nurses, they're in the schools, uh, this is their supply line, they actually went down slightly. Um, and then central office, now, central office, we, um, have to deal with medic, this is where Medicaid, where the revenue and expense, so the revenue comes in at, in the revenue area, but here's where the expense comes. It runs for physical and occupational therapists. We had speech in there, now we've been able to employ those people, so they will not return. We had almost four hundred thousand budgeted in twenty-four, we've gone down to about three hundred thousand. But this is physical therapy, occupational therapy, um, it is for, um, there are pieces, pieces of infant campus, which is our student data system. Um, we've had it for quite a few years, and, um, it's broken into about five or six pieces, but the largest piece by far is in, in central office operating. I go through this so much, I just want to make sure I show y'all everything correctly. Testing, any testing that we have, any supplies that are needed for testing, um, they will come out of this area. There is a new request for a test, and I might have to get Dr. Thomas to chime in on this, that Ms. Cho had requested at third and eighth grade, and I'm trying to remember the name of it off the top of my head. This is why I bring all this in here. It is, uh, Beacon with Lexile.
Okay, yeah.
Um, it's about a dollar seventy-five per student, I'm sorry, for fifth through eighth grade. So that would be about a twenty-seven hundred dollar expense we have not had before. Uh, AP testing, um, Amplify, which is, um, a dyslexia, and they've heard about the dyslexia grant that we talked about this year. We will be getting state grant funds for that, you know, the funds K-three, and we do want to take it through the fourth grade. So we will get revenue for the brunt of it, all but about seventeen hundred dollars for those in grant funds, but I still have to budget the expense, so that's where it's at. So, um, quite a, quite a few items fall into this category. So overall, you're going to see operating actually decreased about sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and most of that is from that speech therapist transitioning from a contracted position into an employed position. Overall, it's an increase of about four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Questions? All right, let's go to improvement of instruction. Don't panic. We have several positions that transitioned here. You're going to see a reduction in the secretary level. Um, we had a couple of positions last meeting, you know, I said we were moving into twenty-eight hundred. This is the area where they came from, so that's why you see a negative almost seventy thousand dollars to start us off. Under technology specialist, we have brought one tech specialist that was in R from Tate into general fund, and then the addition of a lead technology specialist for technology. And, let's see, other management and other administrative. In the other administrative, well, actually both of these, there is, there are three positions at play here. We are transitioning someone from a, I'm trying to remember the correct title, teacher on special assignment into a court, a, a third coordinator position for special ed. That, so that teacher will not be there, it is, it will be plugged in here, and I have made sure that it was eliminated at the proper level and put in here. One, they're eleven months, uh, and they have a supplement attached, but the eleventh month and the supplement will come out of six B funding. That is the way it was prior to R, and we do have three of these positions, so all three of those, the extra months, so beyond the teacher pay, plus the supplement will come out of six B like it did prior to R coming through. A second position, uh, we have a speech, lead speech pathologist that took one of those slots also. She is still going to continue to do her duties, we will add the one month plus the supplement, again, coming out of six B, and she will do some of the coordinator duties, um, during that extra time outside of her teaching, uh, or working with students. The, there were two there already, someone retired, and then we did move another person into the empty slot. So there will be three instead of two, but it has been transitioned from another area to here.
And it's the same number of humans?
Same number of humans, they just moved.
It just got a different category.
And the same thing with something called a behavioral therapist. Um, we had one, we, um, did basically the same thing, eliminated a, a position in, in another area to bring that one here, so that we have two. So it just moves them into this category. So we are doing a little bit of the fruit basket turnover where we're just shifting people around. In the end, we're down over all forty-two and a half positions?
Yeah, maybe like.
Well, that, we eliminated forty-two.
We eliminated forty-two positions, we had just probably thirty-five, just now. The difference is, most of those were federally funded and free from our state funding, now the ones we kept aren't. And so we have, we've had some hard conversations with some of these, but y'all are seeing higher numbers because that looks like we're adding, actually we've reduced, but since we did reduce every single position, yeah, and added to the budget.
In the bottom area for, um, operating expense, there are two categories in here. One is technology, so this is all the operating for the entire technology department and for the curriculum department. So we actually overall had a little tiny bit of an increase at twenty-four hundred fifty-five dollars. We were able to hold that, a few programs were eliminated because of, um, the, the new LMS, and, um, they're going to try something with the LMS and see if that works better for us. We've got some different tools, and some of that is Tate lingo that I can't tell you everything about, but they're satisfied that this will work, and they've talked to the folks throughout the county, and so we were able to kind of hold that budget pretty, pretty firm. Overall, it's an increase of about eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Do y'all have questions?
Now, Amy, tell us about the other administrative personnel again, please.
Other, other administrative?
Okay.
That is where the coordinators, special ed coordinators are. We had two, and now we have three. So we had something called, with working with special ed, we had something called a teacher on special assignment, it was a hundred and ninety days. So that teacher worked as an itinerant going around to the schools, but was still a teacher, still coded out of one thousand, one-ten. Um, moving them into a coordinator position, they are no longer a, what is considered, even though they may work with students, they are not a one-on-one in a classroom with a roster. So I, there are times I cannot code someone to a teacher if they are not, like, one-on-one in some way.
So part of it's reclassification.
Yes, absolutely.
What's?
And then the other management is that behavior therapist. Again, kind of the same thing. So we actually moved several people around, um, and you're going to see some things pop out in other areas where we have, we have done this fruit basket turnover. We've tried to keep the numbers the same, but we may have taken someone, if, when someone retired, we reevaluated everybody and were able to move folks around into, uh, positions that we felt like were either needed or better suited or different things like that, so. Pieces and parts of this are coming from R, that's part of it, too. R was not just full salaries and full positions, there were pieces, like eleventh month of someone, there were supplements, um, and that's, we've been trying to address all that and get them back into grants as much as possible. Some of that did come into general fund, too, and some of it did come in, in some of these areas, like I believe I'm paying the eleventh month and the supplement for the two behavior specialists, but not for the three coordinators, so we kind of did a trade-off there. We had probably six months salary and eight supplements that had to do with sped therapy, uh, behavior type, uh, things that were coming out of six, uh, coming out of R. But now, parts of it will go back, but we can't overload six B either.
Right, but the six B stuff is in here, right?
Yeah, it is.
So some of this stuff is grants.
Yeah, the grants, the grants are coming.
Um, and it, maybe next session I can give you some names of who these people are, if you want to know, but it is the same number of people. We've talked, I think we talked about it previously, there are a lot of different jobs, but it's, if it was six people doing these jobs, it's still six people, but because their titles changed, they had to move into a different line item on the budget, okay?
Well, that's just what I wanted to make clear, that, that basically all that is just changed from.
One section.
One class case to another.
And I believe y'all have seen, other than the grad coach from the last section, and the lead tech.
Yeah, these are things we had discussed.
These have already been approved by, by y'all over the last few months. Okay, any other questions? I'm going to keep moving. Um, the next one is instructional staff training. Um, this is where we earn staff development funds. Um, Dr. May, who is our new curriculum, uh, teaching and learning, um, executive director, she just joined us on May twentieth. So we have certain things like training for y'all that we already know kind of what we're going to spend, superintendent, assistant superintendent, so we have fed some of those earnings into that category, and then some into curriculums and things Dr. Thomas would like, um, Dr. May to attend this year. Um, other than that, I pretty much put it here until everyone has a chance to do an evaluation of how it should be broken up, and that includes the superintendent. Until she got here, we really wanted to, uh, get the principals time to look at it, that was something, uh, we amended a couple of times last year, and we want to let them get a good grip on this new ELA program. There could be up to about seventy thousand dollars in professional learning there. Um, that is all considered in here. So we've broken out a few little pieces of it, we earned about a hundred and twenty-two thousand, we're probably looking at close to a hundred and ninety thousand in expense. Now, I am pursuing a grant opportunity to see if we can pay for some of it out of that. I have not gotten an answer yet, so at this moment, it is in general fund, but if I can get it out of general fund, I will. But we are working on that, but we did have most of it here because it gets broken into, it may be the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, broken into a million pieces. So at the moment, until we have a little more planning, then I will come back and ask for an amendment to split it out, and when we have a good plan available, but she just started last Monday, and she's still helping with a lot of little items right here at the end of this, so.
So Amy, I'm sorry, so this eighty thousand, that's what that is, it's the.
It is the.
Instructional stuff for whatever we're going to do coming forward.
Training.
Okay, got you.
The catalyst version of the PL was about seventy, and they had not had time to evaluate what exactly we want to do. And it isn't, you know, new ELA materials for our schools, and it isn't important, a lot of the piece, a big piece of that is actually knowing how to use it. And so we wanted to give everybody a few minutes. So I did just, that's why this section is a little higher. It's typically broken out among seven or eight areas, and so it's not very much in each area. But I'll be back on this one, and if I can get that grant, I'm going to snag that grant, so. But overall, this was an increase of about sixty-five thousand, and like I said, that was from me plugging in a lot of it here. Let's go to maintenance and operations. Now, this one was a doozy too, because as y'all know, we're bringing custodians back in-house. So we've had the addition of thirty-five custodial positions, that's six leads and twenty-nine regular positions. At this moment, we're shooting to get at least thirty-three.
We're hiring thirty-three now, yeah.
Right now, and in fact, I saw four of them downstairs right before I came up here. The salary, and I mean, I, what I had to do is, the leads, you're going to assume, you know, we have, we give them credit for up to ten years' experience. We are, I made the assumption that they all have ten, because most of these are people, a lot of these are people we know, and that they used to work here, and then know it's been over ten years, so they're probably going to come across with that experience. What I did with the others, the twenty-nine, is I kind of did a weighted average. I have some from zero and I have some up to ten. Leads do, are eligible for TRS, so that does increase their expense. The others do not, they're not a lead, they do not qualify, they are a P-Serve employee, so their expense might be quite as much. But those are all budgeted here, we're working on getting all those positions filled. If it turns out we don't need all thirty-five, we won't fill all thirty-five. But that was what we were attempting to bring in right now based on the plan that's in place. They and their benefits actually total right at two million dollars. But I was able to back off a few areas. The clerical person that was here actually got transitioned to twenty-eight hundred at our last meeting, so you're going to see a reduction for that salary. This does have our maintenance staff, so our eight maintenance guys are in here, and the state help and TRS benefit increases for all these folks. Keep in mind, their work comp rate, their percentage here is over five percent, where someone like me is a point five eight percent. So that cost is quite a bit higher with that, and we are going to monitor that work comp and have somebody right here on the safety when it comes to doing things the proper way, doing all the things the safe way, with their legs and their back belts and you do all these things. So that will be a part of the training for these folks. Do y'all have any questions on top section? In the bottom section, you'll see a huge reduction, and one point three million of that is that ABM contractor. The rest of that, we worked with Mr. Wallace, and we went through the items that were planned, the current contracts that we have, we have two that can just go into an automatic renewal. One, we are considering rebidding. They're very satisfied with two groups, one, they were talking about possibly rebidding, so we think we could actually possibly get a better price, but we went through that. Let's see, insurance, our insurance went up a little bit, and that's GSBA. Communication stayed the same, web-based subscriptions, we were able to eliminate thanks to the, I'll say this wrong, it's not amplify, what's that, your communication?
App to G.
App to G. We've got a new program called App to G.
That's the website, apps.
But it has communication tools, so we were able to eliminate a few web-based programs here. Supplies, the increase is straight up, the custodial supplies
That's right.
that are proposed. Jake Poole has been working with that, has done excellent job. He got with Co-op, and they actually have a plan of how to calculate what you need on startup, and then how to calculate per square foot what you need to maintain. So that does keep all that in mind. You'll see a large reduction under other equipment. We had a three hundred thousand dollar safety grant where we bought equipment. Well, that safety grant is actually going to come in this next time up here in contracted services, and it's only two hundred and seventy thousand, so that's why you're seeing a few changes in line items. One goes up, one goes down. So we went up two fifty in one and went down two eighty-five in another because the grant totals are not the same, and it depends on what you can use them for. Overall, our operating expense decreased by a little over a million dollars. It is, the grand total for maintenance and operations is an increase of eight hundred six thousand. We brought a whole lot into this area, but managed to keep that cost down.
Is it safe to say, Amy, that without the custodial thing, this is actually down?
Yes, it was definitely.
Yeah, so that addition is all custodial, yeah.
Yes.
Probably about a billion or...
We were able to bring several areas down.
Well, based on the trends from the last few years, custodial would have required an increase to everybody.
Sure.
They're normal.
One other line item too, is we've been notified by a particular power company that energy increases are coming, and we have steadily been seeing them come through, and a big hit has not hit yet. That's why you see an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand in there. This is power alone, we deal with two companies, and we've been notified. You need to know about this increase, it's coming, and it's commercial. So it will hit us, it will have a, we'll get a hard hit on that if it gets to us in the long run.
So when we see energy here, Amy, is that across the whole system?
Yes.
That's every building?
That is power, gas, propane, and natural gas, water sewer, that is in another category. But this is power and gas essentially, in whatever form.
Energy, what is that roughly, fourteen percent?
They had said anywhere from thirteen to eighteen, so we did consider doing about fifteen. So I thought we did pretty good in this category, keeping it only eight hundred thousand.
Absolutely.
But, you know, and we may have to come back. If those energy costs are more than what they have told us, we'll be back. But we're going to keep a very close eye on that. And Ms. Parker and I have actually been talking about this, since we have some changes coming in this area. We're probably going to really be, we're going to be able to kind of maintain the money. I do at a distance most of the time, but we're going to be very involved just to make sure with new folks that we stay where we need to be and are addressing issues that come up very quickly. Okay, questions? We're looking right along. Okay, the next area is transportation salaries and benefits. We do not have a lot of change overall, other than the salary changes and the benefit changes here. It looks like a large number at four hundred and sixty-one plus, but it is not more people. In fact, it's a reduction of at least one bus driver. He had planned to be able to reduce by several, but the time change, that one, since it's been very recent, and he is very concerned about, you know, he said, I could probably back off a few more. If we don't need them, we won't hire them. But at the moment, he would like to leave it at, I believe it was fifty-nine bus drivers plus three full-time subs. And that means they show up every single day, and they do get benefits. But we, we're all the time having call on other people. We don't ever not have a route for them to run. Right now, we have two, we have had, when we could hire people, we had up to six full-time subs. That's how much activity. And if they don't have a regular route to run, they're running a field trip or a midday. So they are always busy, they are not allowed to sit and not do something.
And if not, Amy, it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand, but it's state help?
Yes.
So that'll tell you, like, the state helps us up someplace.
And I'll tell you, what I did with this category, what I did with this category and instruction, I actually pulled all the participation rates for these departments and certified, typically we have about an eighty-two and eighty-three percent participation rate. This group, we're down about seventy-five. So I have budgeted a little bit higher than that because I don't need to keep budgeting a hundred percent of the folks and then never take it. You know, if they don't take it, it doesn't cost us anything. But if they do, that's when there's a cost. So again, this is an area that I will be keeping an eye on very closely this year. When these thirty-some odd custodians sign up, if every one of them sign up for state help, I'll be back. But right now, I think I budgeted, they were using about seventy-four, seventy-five percent, and I believe I did seventy-eight. So I think by the trend I've been seeing for the last few years, that will be enough. But just in case, just to let y'all know that it's there, this budget is a lot tighter than we have been in the past. So.
And we had no say over that state help?
No, no.
The state government passes this.
Yes.
They send it down to you.
Okay, we'll flip to operating. Again, you'll see, when you see over there's the right change in budget, zero, zero, zero. We've been able to maintain this budget. Insurance did go where you want it to go, here it is.
Go back one more.
This transportation?
Yeah, transportation.
Okay, I thought, okay, sorry, I thought you said.
Oh, no. You'll see a little, our GSBA insurance is broken across basically the area where y'all are, which is called general administration, maintenance, and transportation. So there is an increase here of about twenty thousand, that is an estimate. I actually get to meet with her this Thursday, and I'll have the actual numbers, so if I need to adjust that. I shot a little bit high, I can bring that down if I need to. Communications staying the same, web-based subscriptions, there is an increase there. We're working with a group called, on our bus communications, tire technologies. We are going to that new program, and now that maintenance fee for that program is going to kick in. We had an old maintenance program, but this is the part, we're in year three of that contract of having it installed. So it does have a little extra expense in this year. This has been being just maintenance, the web-based subscription for maintenance of it. We got delayed one year too, that kind of didn't do, we only had a maintenance fee. Well, now we're picking back up and doing the third-year contract. So the full force of that third-year contract that was signed a couple of years ago is in effect, and that's what a lot of this is.
Amy, the energy, I'm assuming that's just fuel?
Fuel, that's diesel and gas. Actually, we were under budget this time. He felt good based on the trends, and you see that we can reduce that. And he pulled state data on that and showed it to me, and it looked good. So as long as we don't have anything drastic happen in the next year. We always keep an eye on it too, though. On line and purchase or lease of buses, you see a large reduction, that's almost seven hundred thousand dollars. You know, we had two different state grants to purchase buses. One was six hundred sixteen thousand, six seventy, and that was to buy eight buses, a portion of eight buses last year. We did buy and purchase those buses this year, so that grant is not repeatable. That was a three-year grant, we bought our buses, so we're done. State bond funds, we usually get around between seventy-seven and eighty-one thousand per bus. We pick up the rest as a loss. At this time, our fleet may be so new that we don't earn any money, or we may only earn half a bus. So I did not feel comfortable putting that in here until we actually get work. If we get it, I'll do the revenue and the expense side, and then the remainder we go slots. But overall, that budget is down about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Amy, I'd be interested when we get to that point. What is the difference in, is there a balance point right there to where maybe, maybe stay another year or two with a bus would be?
If you...
I don't know that it necessarily better or worse, but budget was what the impact would be.
Like I said, earning one bus, we can, we will earn anywhere from seventy-seven and change up to about eighty-one. The big bus grant last year, that one lasted into twenty-five. But here's what happens with grant funds sometimes. Sometimes it is a multi-year grant, after a year or two, they'll go, never mind. You got to spend it by this, and buses take so long to order. It took us about a year to get the ones we got, so.
Well, one company couldn't even supply them.
Right, and so we wanted to make sure that we got those funds, and so that pushed us up. We went from about ten-year fleet to about a twelve-year fleet, so, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, twelve-year fleet to ten-year fleet. So that may have hurt us a little bit, but it was definitely worth going after that six hundred sixteen thousand.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if for some reason it doesn't get renewed, and things can happen with the economy that caused that to happen. I've seen it many times, so it wasn't, I did agree with them, you know, let's get the buses while the money is there, and it's better for the system, we've got newer buses. We might only earn half of us this time, but it's better than losing six hundred and sixteen thousand.
Absolutely.
But, you know, and we could have a large, that grant doesn't end yet. In a couple of years, we get another large grant that can split out there. When you hear surplus of revenue, you'll see things like that happen. So we usually will go ahead and try to spend that money before it disappears, just like ARC. Okay, any other questions on transportation? All right, this is where we're going, this is our general fund budget summary. We'll talk about revenue for a minute. On the left-hand side, you'll see revenue and the local ad valorem tax. Budgeted for twenty-four, we recorded about twenty, well, not recorded, we budgeted twenty-five million, three hundred thirty-one thousand. That is based on the village rate and the tax digest. Of course, we don't have all that information now, but have spoken with the appropriate folks, and they think that we will earn right at either a little above or a little below what we did last year. If we do, and depending on one big thing, I don't know, the reevaluation where it creates the rollback rate, we could potentially, and pretty reasonably, earn an additional three million dollars for what we did this year. That information is not ready yet, this is, I actually had a phone call this morning confirming some of this information. But they are not done, but felt secure saying right at, a little above, or a little below. So that is, we could have it come in above or below, but the reevaluations, reassessments on properties does have an effect and does create the rollback number. I have nothing on that right now. That alone could adjust that number by half a million, depends on where it comes through. Last year, we had a very high reassessment rate. So I tried to balance the information that I had with that. The next area is other local taxes. This is like intangible tax, real estate transfer tax, railroad equipment. These, I did a very conservative one hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. We are still selling properties and making, doing closings, and that does generate that money, but it doesn't look like it's going to change a lot from what we did this year. But we were able to use the averages and make us up just a little bit. QBE, this is our preliminary allotment, and I do want to explain a little bit what happened here. So we should see a number there in the difference of about one point three million instead of that eight hundred thousand. But what happened at midterm is our FTEs decreased. That cost us about six hundred and sixteen, excuse me, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars when your FTE goes down. That is, that is how you earn your money, that's the kids and the schools, so our number.
Amy, for people that might be watching, not familiar, would you explain FTE?
FTE is the tool developed by the Georgia Department of Education to measure how many classes the students are in, and we earn, we earn based on those ratios. So like, a gifted class may earn more than a regular education class, but a special education class will earn at a higher weight. So based on what weight it is, what program it is that we are serving students with, you earn money. You earn up to six segments per student, and so you hope, you see six segments for every student. We occasionally have ones we don't. High school, we have, there's a calculation method, so that we do earn for FTE for a student. But we did lose some enrollment, that's another reason we're a little concerned with that graduation coach. But that should be about one point three million if we had been able to keep the full FTEs. But it was across the board, we lost it every PVE earnings category, which is over thirty. So we lost it to all of them.
But that's primarily because of lower enrollment?
Yes, absolutely. It is not something we're doing wrong, it is not something that's being recorded wrong, it is the number of students in the building has decreased.
And FTE stands for full-time equivalent? And FTE stands for full-time equivalent?
Full-time equivalent, yes. State other, we did have some large state grants last year that are not going to repeat. I did note the safety grant, two hundred and seventy thousand. This is where state locational grants, state pre-K, math and science, and several other, like dyslexia, lots of other smaller state grants, but they do add up. But the reduction, again, is nothing we've done. We just had that big, huge bus, you know, almost six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That was the biggest change we had, and a little decrease in the state safety grant. So we're going to see a loss there, but overall, we're going to be about fifty-nine and a half million. The only item I can see jumping a lot there is that adverbal tax. That is the only one that could move much, because that is our preliminary allotment for PVE. So that's what we'll have until any kind of changes. And the bottom section, of course, is the expenditure. All the expenditures you'll see, the categories that we presented in the past and the ones today make up the full general fund. One thing I'll note way down toward the bottom, that transfer out, the next thing we're going to talk about is Fund One Fifty, and that is where the other five schools instructional areas are. So we had over seven hundred thousand dollars in textbooks slash digital resource workbook type things. We had other expense for instruction that was typically digital that changed that transfer out from three hundred and forty thousand to nine hundred and seventy-two thousand. So we're going to go to that category next. But overall, it, our budget expenditures are up about six and a half million.
So I have a question. Do you know, as we end this year, where are we coming in on our budget number for this year?
I would.
Your best guess?
My best guess would be between a million and a half and two million.
That will be under budget?
That will be under.
Okay.
I will probably need to bring, I'm, we're doing a little bit of research right now, a little cleanup, and might need to write one more budget amendment to deal with a couple of things. I would still like to see if we get this copier replacement that would be over a hundred thousand dollars, because we do have the money and instruction to get those out to those schools. Trying to see if I can get them delivered in time. They have to be here by June thirty and installed if we do that. So I'm still pushing that, see if we can get that done. Schools are excited about that.
And best guess, starting July one, general fund balance, what do you think?
If, if we, let's say a million and a half, say we maintain a million and a half, and see, we still have tax money coming in until August. Again, conservative guesses here, we would be probably at about twenty-two and a half million, maybe two and a half, twenty-two and a half plus. But you see the revenue and the expense difference. We would have to pick up the difference.
We'll pick up some, but we're in, but yeah. But if your number's right on revenue, too, that if we in fact take in three, two and a half, three million on the adverbal taxes, that absorbs some of that.
So in essence, that we expect some shortfall, we're not sure exactly how much that could be covered by existing general fund balance, and should not really impact the million.
What you, what you're allowed to do, any, any end-of-the-year funds that are, that remain available, unspent funds, unspent revenue, as long as it is general fund revenue, may be rolled into the next year's budget. And of course, anything in fund balance, you can, you can always draw upon any given year that you need to. So, you know, we're looking at, which we fully expected this, based on what all we've done in general fund this year. We have been able to increase our certified local percentage from eleven to twelve percent. We added an additional step to the certified schedule. We did last year for the first time, and we did again this year. We have increased athletic, academic, and.
Arts.
Art supplements. We have increased the non-certified pay schedule. And on that bottom end of folks, the lowest pay, that was a nice increase. That was a dollar fifty an hour increase for those staff members, and of course, it did push the schedule, but the minimum was about three and a half, four percent across the board.
The minimum, yeah. But you said the lower they was paid now, the higher the percentage, how we did it this year. And in the last four years, we have doubled the lowest salaries at that.
So here's.
More than, in most cases.
With all the changes we've done this year, I mean, the thought for that next year's budget, we shouldn't be absorbing all this stuff in the next year. So it should be, we'll have a cost, but it shouldn't be nearly like this year.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It is that, you know, it's something to think about as we go into next year. We did some very large, significant changes, and they came with some big price tags in order to become more competitive with the counties around us. We're in a very unusual slot between the North Georgia counties, who we are very competitive with, and the counties south of us that are beating us up pretty badly. So we are, we're not competing with Cherokee and Fulton.
Just on financials.
Right, right. There you go. But, you know, north of us, you know, we're leading the pack in a lot of areas now, and so it should be easier for us to, you know, retain staff, pull staff in. Bus drivers getting a little better, that's across the state of Georgia, there's a shortage there. But Beth Thompson in food service has made the comment that she is able to keep more positions as we've increased the hourly rates for her staff, that she is able to keep people, you know, she'd keep them for a few months, and they could find a job making more somewhere else. Now we're much, much more competitive. This happened to be a year that state health increased quite a bit, more than we expected. TRS will have a slight increase next year, too, that we've, you know, we've gotten notification that they passed that this year. But, you know, we had a lot, we have had a lot going on this year. So this is a lot of things that we've been able to accomplish, but we are going to pay for it. And then next year, what we hope to see is that it will calm down, but like bringing, bringing those custodians back in-house, because we think that's best for the school system. We're buying some equipment, we've split it across twenty-four and twenty-five. Some of those things won't repeat.
And the art stuff. Well, we committed, we committed last year to work on that local supplement over a number of years. So the only thing I know for sure about twenty-six is that we will want to look at that local supplement number again. Now beyond that, I mean, that's a year out, but still, that's something we're committed to.
We're, we on our end are more committed than we've been to leaving it how it is for a while, or not recommending anything different unless Dr. Thomas says. But, yeah, that, the art stuff coming in this year, too, you got to know, remember, we had fifty-four, fifty-four positions, I think, that we kind of turned into about sixteen positions, you know what that means? But those sixteen were all new to you guys, as far as what you, the part you all paid for. And so it made the budget go up. But we had some really tough conversations. It was not really the year to go tell the principal to change some more things with their budget. And so we did so many good things this year, but one of them was, we knew every, and if, I know y'all, the Boys and Girls Club thing, they were talking about how they lost a grant, right? Like everything you go to, this government-related, they're saying this year, they lost a grant. Cherokee County laid a bunch of folks off, because art is what we know as art, but there's a COVID grants that run out right now. So everybody knew this was going to be a tough year budget-wise. In addition to that, we did a custodian, we did increase pay. You guys should be proud that you're able to continue doing those things in a time where we also lost this grant that was millions of dollars, and we've had to work around that, too.
Well, that was a seminar at GSBA conference that described the loss of the art as a cliff.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they were just a little step for us, it wasn't a cliff.
Yeah. Our people were really good, they've done a great job working with us, they really have, and we found as many of them homes we could, I mean, a bunch of them, and we'll keep working. Yeah.
Basically, that increase you're seeing, the, from the twenty-five, or from twenty-four to twenty-five is three things. It's all the salary benefit changes that we made across the board, whether it was bringing positions in from art, adding a couple of new things, going from eleven to twelve percent. TRS, they helped, all of that. That plus the textbooks of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand and a hundred dollar net increase in energy, that's our, that's our expense. That totals out within less than twenty thousand dollars. So, I mean, that is what it is. We're doing, what we're doing is for our people, for our staff, to help the school system. Operating is not what it is now. To book textbooks, we have not done textbook adoption in years. So you do have to do this occasionally, and so it is a larger item, but those three things are what make up that total. Even though the salary benefit part is a lot of little things, but, but I mean, it's, I even did it two or three different ways, just trying, I'm looking for where I don't, where something's not adding up, and I mean, it's adding up across the board, so. All right, y'all have questions about general fund? All right, the next is consolidation funds. Now, this is Fund One Fifty, and I will go through this briefly. I did two things. One is I did the crazy that we have to do, that I'm hoping to explain how this works. It is that bringing in of general fund and federal money. So this is basically out of Title One, Two, or Four. These are the grants that are going to be left after ARC is gone. You bring a little bit of money from here, and a little bit of money from here, and you put them in a pot together to relieve some of the red tape that the feds require. But it does things like, you can have a full-time remedial teacher versus, you can only take this person for a third of the day, and you have to make them keep a time journal, every minute has to be recorded, so there's a lot of red tape involved in that. So this relieves us of some of that, and still make them do our normal red tape. But, so you'll see, we're going to have a transfer in from general fund, and you'll see in twenty-four, is that transfer out you see on general fund is a transfer in here. So that's where that's linked. Then the expense per school, I wanted y'all to see, we are trying to keep their numbers up, and then their textbooks are on top. And then you'll see a number of transfer out to federal monies, and you'll see a big decrease there, about three hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars. And then your, your total expense that's left is the forty, forty from this year and the nine seventy-two, and it actually washes back to zero. So all your expense winds up back in federal and back in general fund. This is basically a wash account, but this is how they make us record it. So what you normally see on the budget is the next page. All y'all see is we budget revenue and expense. Flip one more page, there you go. You see the short version of it, but I wanted y'all to see the whole thing, that we're bringing it in from general fund, we're pushing expense out to federal. This is what you actually wind up seeing on your monthly report. So those transfers I talk about, there's a process involved that takes between two and three weeks to clear, but this is what you will wind up seeing on that one-page thing. But you couldn't see the schools, you couldn't see how much money they actually have to spend for instruction, and I wanted you to be able to see that. So that first page is that. So do not think that these schools do not have instructional funds. When it's lumped in like this, you can't see that. So I just wanted to share that with you. Okay, the next page is special revenue. Now, the next ones are going to be school nutrition. This is her one-page version. We have a twenty-something page version that we get to enter. She is not going up, not doing the pricing increase next year. You will see that she needs to use some fund balance. She has rules about her fund balance, so her revenue is less than her expenditures, and she's doing that on purpose. So she has been working that fund balance down for the last couple of years, so she needs to continue to do that one more time, and then I believe we'll be back in range. But no, no meal increase this year. She considered it and decided that she could handle it without it one more year. Do y'all have questions on school?
So the total, the total amount that all our lunches, our, our lunches and breakfast at school, is that that bottom figure?
It is three million, one hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, they will, we've been, they've been able to do, they've had a grant for free introduced breakfast that is eliminated after this year, so you're going to see that come back into this program, that's part of the increase. But her increases, keep in mind, most of her folks went from that thirteen fifty up to fifteen dollars, and then their state health. So a lot of your increase here, of course, she's had some food cost increases and things you'll see there, but the big increases are in salary benefits. Her folks are really going to benefit from that non-certified increase. Got any questions? All right, the next. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine slides are all federal grants, so I'm going to hit them quick because these are estimates. They are pretty much what you've seen before, but these are estimates. We will have to come back when we actually have the true allotments, but typically, we may not have that anywhere from June to about October. But first one is Title One. All the way down to the bottom, you will see those consolidation transfers. Those are those transfers you just saw in One Fifty, those are for those schools, so that's part of their instructional funds. But I'll let you peruse, this has to, we have a requirement for an N and D, which is neglected and delinquent set aside, we have a homeless set aside, their, their parent involvement set asides that are required. So a lot of this grant is dictated by those items. About ten percent of two staff members comes out of this grant for maintaining the grant, and the rest of it goes to the schools. I'm going to let them peruse, this is three pages for Title One, I'm going to let them just peruse, because it, it's all in either a set aside or a transfer out to a school. If you want to flip one more page, that's page three. Y'all have questions? All right, let's go to Title Two. All of Title Two is transferred out to Title One and Title Four. So the expense that you see on Title One just adds to it, and over a hundred thousand dollars is transferred to Title Four. Let's go ahead and flip to Title Four. I'm sorry, I don't have Title Four behind me, so I have, when we get to Title Four, it pays for our college and career coach and his assistant. And then they have a little tiny bit of supply money, and so that's what we do, is we take that Title Two grant that is extremely restrictive, and we are allowed to break it into the other two grants that are not as restrictive, so that we can pass it on to the schools and use it for that college and career. IDEA six eleven is called Special Ed Flow Through Grant. This is the regular special ed grant that you see. You're going to see parent pros. This actually says eight, because it came from this year. It says eight pairs and supplements for nine self-contained pairs. It will actually be eleven, ten out of here, and one out of pre-K next year. Like I said, this is based on this year, and it is just an estimate at this point. But they buy all kinds of supplemental items for special ed students. They must be identified as special ed, and it must be something beyond the normal supplies we buy for the regular education students. So there are two pages of the first grant, and on the third page, you're going to see the federal pre-K portion, where there's one pre-K para, subs, and a tiny bit for contracted therapists. We go on to the next one. This is vocational. We have the Perkins Program Improvement, and this is basically the same, same, everything is exactly the same as we did this year. They don't plan to make any changes on this. These are the allowed items. When you see some of the OAN, this is coverage that is required when you apply to every one of these, before we can spend the money, you must apply through the consolidated application, put your budget in with your expense per item, and these descriptions can be approved by two people at the state level and the superintendent before you're allowed to touch the money. Go on to Perkins Five Plus Reserve. It's about fifty-three thousand dollars. It's for pathway assessments, and then grand total for vocational grants is fifty-three thousand dollars. And bridge capital outlay. Do y'all have questions on any of those grants? Capital outlays lost. We have done an actual estimated fund balance, actual for twenty-four, estimated for twenty-five, show our anticipated tax revenue, and I'm using about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month, which is just a little lower than what our actual average is, just so we don't over, overplan spend. Our GFIC funds that we anticipate receiving on the high school project, so our revenue totals eleven million, eight hundred fifty-one thousand. And then the expenditures, we have a one and a half million dollar budget for technology, which includes a built-out server room, purchase of servers, lab updates, computers, printers, and other technology equipment. And maintenance and operations, they'd like to keep theirs the same at one point two million, and that's renovations, repairs, modifications, furniture, and equipment. These are. These are ones that are not typically handled by, um, not typically handled by, uh, our C and RIS. These are, uh, the smaller projects that go through. Um, they can buy furniture for schools, um, anything like that. Transportation, they requested to purchase three buses, two activity buses, one white fleet. Uh, retrofit the buses with bus cameras and other equipment that go along with the bus cameras. And that's a million dollars. And then capital outlay, and now this is a guess. Based on the information that I have, because we don't actually have, you know, cold, hard cold numbers on this, but, thirteen million has to potentially cover, uh, the end of the PHS fieldhouse project, PHS renovation phase one, PHS and PJHS gym pack re-roofing, PHS old attic facility remodel, PHS live animal facility, PHS old fieldhouse remodel, and potentially the PHS track. And like I said, those are estimates on a lot of those numbers. So you will, y'all will see every one of the G and Bs that comes through here and, and be involved in the approval. Um, so that does spend quite a bit of money. So notice at the bottom, that fund balance, that leftover fund balances will go down a little bit if we spend all that money.
It's glossed, right now.
It's glossed, this is all glossed. Okay, y'all good with that? So what's next? When you are satisfied with what has been, um, presented to you, before we can go into any kind of approval for any part of the budget, we will summarize it into one document and we have to have two public hearings. They cannot be within the same week. They can be attached to another meeting, like a regular board meeting. Um, we have done a couple of different things, but it must be advertised in the public organ, which is the newspaper. So I have to know in enough time to get that ad to the paper and let it run prior to the meeting. And then the two meetings have to be at least a week apart. Now, once we do the two public hearings and report that, we will be ready to do tentative approval. You can have a meeting, like the second meeting, and do a tentative approval on the same day. You just have to do them in the right order. So y'all just let superintendent know if you need any additional information about the budget. Um, I suspect, and from what I understand, we will not have the digest information till sometime in July. Um, so we can do a tentative approval. If we're not ready to do a tentative approval, when we go into the June board meeting, I will ask for a spending resolution. And if we happen to do a tentative approval by the end of the month, that's fine. But at the point that we do the regular board meeting, if I don't have a tentative approval, um, I would like to go ahead and do a spending resolution.
Which month is that, Amy, that's?
June, because it would be due for July. It would allow us to spend up to one twelfth of, of the previous year's expenditures, um, from general fund.
What is the, do we want to decide on a date of the first hearing?
Yeah.
We have a, a work session on June seventh, it's a Friday.
All right, June, June seventh?
Oh, that's today, I believe, we will part of that into today, dude.
But I think we moved the work session to June the eleventh.
It's June eleventh, because that work session.
Because of the.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you remember, last summer, did we, when do we have these hearings?
We did one with the June meeting.
One with the June meeting, okay.
We won, the June meeting's on the thirteenth, though.
Well, let's do that one. Let's do the first one before the meeting, can we do it at four?
I think we did something like last week, like we made it like four thirty.
You're right.
Four, four thirty one.
Four, four thirty on the thirteenth?
On the thirteenth, all right.
Jeff?
June thirteenth at four, four thirty.
Does it need more than thirty minutes?
Four, yeah.
That is absolutely.
Four is good, it's just too full.
Four?
Yeah, I can do four.
All right.
And then we can follow that up later in the month if we want.
And, and you can wait until July if you want to get in conjunction with, we might get the digest. I mean, you just have to have two public hearings that are advertised in the paper in at least a week. Other than that.
But what's the, what's the deadline you got to have on the tentative approval so you don't have to do a spending resolution? It's got to be done by end of June?
I'm trying to remember the rule on, um,
That's fine.
Let me, let me check on something.
That's fine.
Because.
I think we've used a spending resolution at least a month, it's about, it's a break. The spending resolution for the last three.
And the sunlight rules, one twelfth of the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not, I mean, all we, all we can do.
Yeah, look and see what we did last year.
But you can do a spending resolution at June meeting, right?
Yes.
And then not use it if we don't need it.
Right. It's better to have it in place and not need it than not have it in place, it's just.
That's June thirteenth, we probably do one.
So we could, we would, uh, do the public hearing, are you, oh, here we have a thing.
Two's bad.
Five and the six on June eighth. June twenty-seven is the budget workshop last year.
That's when we probably did the second.
There was your public hearing, July thirteenth.
All right, July thirteenth.
First public hearing, July.
When was the second one? I think it was in July, I think.
September fourteenth. That was the second.
Okay, so we waited until we got.
When is our July meeting?
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
We won't do the same thing in July? We will have already done a, yeah, I mean, spending resolution, but we won't be taking another day?
Yeah. Yeah, if that's, yeah, that's fine, if we can wait until July and just do it then, that's fine. If you stood.
How do you feel about them, Mr. Smith?
I'm, I'm fine with that, as, as long as I will go for a spending resolution in June, so that we can write checks.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a whole lot of money, but that does save the taxpayers each other's salary for one meeting. Like that's going to make or break you any, but.
Do you, do you want four o'clock?
Four o'clock on the July eleventh?
Mm-hmm.
So that will be your first?
The first one will be June thirteenth.
Okay.
At four, and the second will be July eleventh.
And those can be advertised accordingly.
Yes, that will give me time to get, uh, ads to the paper.
And I can vote on that July eleventh one, too.
Yes, and on July eleventh, if you're ready to do tentative approval of the budget, you can do that in your regular meeting.
Okay. Unless there's changes, I have that on the July.
You actually, um, as long as, we have the right to change the budget up until the final approval, but, um, we try not to, I mean, we try to have it as a whole. We, we should be pretty solid. The only thing that, you know, we are not really secure on is that revenue. And I've done a tentative, uh, you know, reapproval of tentative to make sure that our revenue reflected the right amount when it came in. Okay, so I'm going to make note, um, public hearing, June thirteenth at four o'clock, public hearing, June eleventh at four o'clock. And then at the six o'clock meeting, we will tentatively approve the tentative approval.
Okay.
June thirteenth and July eleventh.
Okay. So we'll have a spending resolution at the June meeting. And if you need any other information, please reach out, can reach out to superintendent.
And our work sessions are June eleventh and July eighth, is that right?
No.
June eleventh, July ninth, I think, right. I think it was the Tuesday.
I've got the eight written down.
Oh, I did have that on the July ninth on the Tuesday. Yeah, we moved them off Fridays because they're off, the board office is off on Friday during the summer.
Yeah, but that's not, that was not an issue here. I have them written down and it's been changed. Okay, um.
I had them both in my phone from our last session, June eleventh and July ninth, board sess, work sessions.
June eleventh, July ninth.
Amy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Amy.
Thank you for the presentation here.
Thanks for getting that out to us to look at for you.
Um, I will send you the, um, the doc, the summary document, you know, to the thirteenth so you can see it all put on that one page.
Okay, how about if we, as we move into executive session, we can take a break, but let's go ahead and, go ahead and do the mechanics to do that?
Sure.
Does that sound good? All right. So, uh, at this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss or deliberate on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer or employee, or interview applicants for the position of superintendent, to discuss or vote to authorize negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, to authorize ordering an appraisal related to acquisition or disposable of real estate, entered into a contract to purchase, dispose of, or lease property subject to approval in a subsequent public vote, or entered into the option to purchase, dispose of, or lease real estate subject to approval in a subsequent, subsequent public vote. To consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought, or to be brought by or against the school district, or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We adjourn the executive session at three fifty-four PM.